Direction to make one test whenever we feel it's prudent to do that. There is no such thing as a $10,000 chemical test for small particles in water. I'm sure it would be well within their budget to handle it.
If I may, the motion, I think, is to test for contaminants.
Anything you can think of, I guess.
Exactly, anything that a prudent person might.
No, I declared that we are the prudent people. Only we would make that decision and we would give it to you.
Then, so I go back to saying that then, are you looking for us to prepare a report with a cost estimate to come to you then?
No, I'm just asking you to do the test. And that's it, and we all agreed.
I'm not clear. I don't know. I guess I'm lost. What test am I to approve? What test am I to perform?
Okay, I'm gonna call on Alderman Coles and, okay, Alderman Coles.
City of Chicago just got done testing the water that comes out here. And they found contaminants in the water, which they claim that it isn't gonna hurt anything. They just got done doing a test on that.
Yeah, I promise you.
Yeah, and you want us to do another test? City of Chicago just got done paying X number of dollars to have it tested.
We're not going to test for what they tested for. That's out of the question.
Well, they tested for everything.
Okay, okay, then, is there any final comments before I ask Ms. Schultz to repeat the motion one more time and then I'm gonna call the roll? Alderman Wesley.
I really agree with Gary on this one because, you know what? We have no, if you're asking to test everything, I'm totally confused with this too because I have no clue what this could cost us. And it wasn't a budget item, and he needs a direction on how many chemicals he's going to test for. Sam, Mr. Luton, I see your point, but are we only going to test for this per, we don't have, this could, if you test for every chemical, this carried up. There's no doubt about it. I will tell you that right now. I mean, if you just wanna test for that one right now, I would have no problem doing that.
Okay, Mr. Murmas.
Oh, that's fine.
I just have a question. So, the direction or the motion was basically to go outside of the IEPA's scope and test for what we think appropriate instead of the IEPA?
Yes, that's correct, but that's brought to us our attention by somebody of competence like Camaras.
Okay, I'm gonna recognize two more people. I'm gonna recognize Alderman Police and Alderman Caddala, then I'm gonna call the roll. Alderman Police.
I'd just like to know what the price is gonna be before we do the final, before you actually do the test. This way, it doesn't come back and you're telling us it's $100,000.
Well, the cost of the testing will depend on the scope of the testing. So, if we're talking about one test for one contaminant, I would imagine that cost will be minimal.
Okay.
And then Alderman Caddala.
You know, I am for this in theory, but I really think we need some clarification. I'd like to, tonight, rather than continue with the motion to have staff just do this, I'd like to have staff put together a proposal of what it is that we might be wanting, looking to test for, and an approximate associated cost. Come back to us and approve that. Then we know exactly what it is that we're dealing with. So, while I think I understand where this is going, that's the way I would feel most comfortable with having my vote as a yes.
Well, here's my concern, though. The IEPA dictates or sets standards on how this should be done, given what we have in the city. And that's what we've done. I mean, I feel that we are following the guidelines, and anything outside of that the staff would come up with, I would be shocked. I wouldn't wanna see any other recommendation from staff because we're here to follow what is mandated from the IEPA. I'm gonna ask Ms.
Did you read Gary's report?
Yes, I did. And I've done here, I'm gonna ask Ms. Schultz to call the, to read off the motion and then call the roll.
The motion was to direct staff to test for whatever biological, chemical, or other elements in the water council feels is prudent to test for.
Right.
Alderman.
Excuse me, is that a technical question on the wording, Alderman Police?
Right.
Okay, what is it?
When we're gonna amend the motion to?
No.
With the price?
No.
No.
Not for this one.
How does council determine what's prudent to test for?
I agree, it's the IEPA that mandates this. Okay, we're not engineers up here. Okay, Ms. Schultz, please call the roll.
Alderman Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Police.
Yes.
Alderman Lewitan.
Yes.
Alderman Sharkey.
No.
Alderman Caddala.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
No.
Alderman Coles.
No.
The, the eyes have it four to three. Motion passes. Does staff need any clarification before we, well, actually, when it goes to council, if we need any further guidance on it, we'll, we'll get it then. Item number 11 is items to be considered at future meetings. A, storm sewers detention ordinance revision. Item B, grate separation, other safety alternatives endorsement. Item C, Emerald Ash Bore Action Plan. Item D, water consumption. Any other items? Alderman Caddala.
I believe this would go on this committee, Madam Chairman. I'd like staff and myself to help put together a brief presentation on the train station architectural progress for the benefit of the rest of the council and anybody watching. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items? Alderman Wesley.
I would like the update on, when the RFPs are going out for the study of treatment plan, please.
Is it doable, Mr. Home? Like, what are we looking, or is there just an overall answer you can give there?
Time-wise, probably the RFQs for the treatment process will probably go out in either late May or early June, so another three or four weeks, probably.
Okay, okay, so we got that one off the list. Anything else? Future meetings? Make a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll call the finance chairman of committee order. Let the minute taker note that same people are present. I need motion approved minutes, March 27, 2008. Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Report and recommendation advisory subcommittee proposal of scope. I believe, Jeff, I believe this was yours, that you wanted the committee to be able to avoid the city council, well, not avoid the city council, but try and make recommendations since they have a budget, that they could go and spend the money with their budget. Am I correct or am I wrong in that?
You're incorrect.
Okay, I am incorrect. Jeff, take.
I was simply seeking some direction for staff's benefit and what to do. I didn't say we were gonna do it one way or we're gonna do it another. I just saw a potential problem coming in the future. In the past, we had bigger projects. For instance, I'll bring up Streetscape, but this applies to other committees. We would have bigger projects where, let's say, we landscaped and had a, you know, landscaped design for a whole, you know, by Shorty's Restaurant, that whole area, you know, that was quite a significant amount of money. Big project that was approved during the budget year just for landscaping improvements. Let's say we had a $50,000 budget. Let's say that project was $25,000. Streetscape recommended some ideas, they brought it to council, council voted on it, and we ended up getting it done. I'm seeing now that we still have some larger projects in the pipeline, but there's some smaller projects that are being done, not only in Streetscape, but it's a Clean Air Counts Committee or other committees, where the project, let's say, costs $500, or it costs $2,000, or it costs $5,000, or, you know, 300. Now, these projects, does the advisory board have to go to council every time then if it's a $500 project? If we have $50,000 in a Streetscape budget for the general term of landscape improvements, does then that, I give an example of a garbage can, does then the Streetscape Committee go to the council? Council has a discussion on the colors of the cans, the locations of the cans, the quantities of the cans, if the cans are gonna cost a couple hundred dollars, or even a couple thousand, like two, $3,000 when we've got a budget of $50,000. That's just a hypothetical, that hasn't happened yet. I foresee this happening in the future. In the past, we've already had projects for Clean Air Counts where, in the overall budget we've had, I think, $15,000, and Clean Air Counts has really just written a memo, or I've written a memo, saying, hey, we're spending $500 on these containers for the gas can container program, and it was in the budget, and there wasn't an issue raised, but there could've been an issue raised. So, I just need direction on, when do these subcommittees, when do they have to, when does the council have to talk about the project that they're recommending? Is there a dollar amount? Is it every project? I'm just looking for direction. I'm not saying yes or no either way, I just need some direction.
Christine Winger.
Thank you. I recognize that there is a problem, too, and I agree with everything you've said in this report. And I think what we should be doing is being a little more concise at budget time and saying, here is what we want this committee to work on. Streetscape is a great example. There might be 10 projects that we're asking Streetscape to go do. It's really a council direction on what we want our committees to do, and then we ask them to go do it. And let's say we want garbage cans, and we say, spend $10,000 on them. Then we're gonna let them go buy those garbage cans and stay under $10,000 and get it done within the budget year. And it's those people who we put in place on that committee to get their job done. So, who are we to then question and pick apart what they picked out? But we're the ones that would say what we want them to look at. Do we want them to look at a sculpture garden or not? Do we want them to look at, you know, XYZ project or not? And that's not in budget. And if we give them, like, in this next budget process, we need to kinda line item out what it is that we want them to do and give them those expenditure amounts. But then, otherwise, we never finish much because then we argue about what they came back with, or sometimes I sit there and go, why is committee XYZ working on that? Because once it comes to council, I don't even wanna be doing it. You know what I mean? So, we need to be more clear on what we have our committees doing, and then give them the leeway to get the job done. Well, we gotta be very clear with the expenditure amount. Thank you.
Mr. Caddala.
You know, I'm not, I'm not against Alderman Winger's concept in theory, but the practical, the practical side of it is that, I think, you know, I'll just use Streetscape as I'm there, so I can, I can talk about it pretty well, I think. The idea for the sculpture garden, I thought, came from Streetscape members. The idea for the garbage cans, I thought, came from members of Streetscape. This committee, this subcommittee, whatever we call it, is generating the ideas. So, unless this council wants to start generating the ideas, which isn't what has been happening, I mean, maybe to some degree with some particular larger-scale projects, but I don't know how that could actually, how that could work. So, I mean, unless we change inherently what it is that Streetscape or any other committee's supposed to be doing, I mean, we, you know, we would, we would then only have a, basically a laundry list of things that council, you know, wants these committees to get done. And I have no problem with it, it's just, it's not the way it works right now, and I think that's a very major inherent change that we need to consider.
Mr. Coles, you had your hand up?
Yes, I did. If we give, if we budget Streetscape Committee $50,000, and they come up with some kind of an idea, and it's under $10,000, or that, they should just automatically do that. They don't have to come to the council to have it, because they've already been allotted to $50,000. They're allowed to spend that, which is, which is, I, that's what I figure. That's what I, that's what we budgeted for them to spend. But if they keep it under $10,000, they don't have to come to the council. Anything over $10,000 has to be done through the council. That's, that was the rule that I thought it was. That's it.
Let me go one time through because I know Mr. Johnson has his hands up, and then we'll come back. Okay, Mr. Johnson?
It seems to me, to some extent, we're talking semantics. I do not agree, and do, I think it's a good idea to let the committees make final decision on expenditure of money. I don't think legally you can do that without them being subject to the conflict of interest laws that apply to us. So, example, if the Special Events Committee Historical Society wants to spend 350 bucks on a speaker program, they're giving money to themselves, and that would be a conflict of interest situation. So, the final authority has to rest with the city council to approve the bills, but the resolution is, the manager, if it's in the budget, does have the authority to make the expenditure for the garbage cans or anything under $10,000. So, the budget is your legal authority, and there is an existing policy in place that the manager can go ahead and spend those funds, later to be ratified by the city council. But I think it would be a mistake to tell the committee that they are actually authorizing or approving any expenditure of funds.
Mr. Sharkey.
Go ahead.
I think what everybody has said here has merit. The difficulty I see in the real world is that if something is done by a committee, and then we have our citizens asking us, why did you do that? I have to go back and tell them, I really don't know. This was done by a committee of non-elected people. We're the ones who are elected to represent the people, yet we may not have a say. So, that's the problem I have, is that people will come, not to the committee members, but to the council members, and say, what did you do that for? And who's responsible for doing this? Thank you.
Mr. Newsill.
I was, I'm basically gonna say the same thing. Their advisory committee, we have to answer to the citizens. I can speak for my committee. We just bought something. As a chairman, and the vice chairman who's sitting next to me, did not know that we purchased this item. How does that happen? I wanna know how that happens. I'm the chairman, I didn't know. And we had one price, we had one price. I go, you cannot go with one bid, you need three bids. It was purchased. How does the committee have the authority to purchase, just because it's in the budget, when the chairman and the co-chairman have no clue that it was purchased? I just wanna know. I have to answer the other aldermen. What am I gonna tell them? Hey, you know, they do whatever they feel like it. That's not gonna fly. I know, when that bill comes up next week, or the week after, they're gonna ask me, oh, really? You bought this? And I'm gonna say, not me.
What did you buy?
You bought the band.
We bought a PA system. And now, granted, the money's in the budget, but you know what? I think it would be nice if the chairman and the vice chair would actually know about that. When you ask, when you see it in the bills and you ask me, and I'm gonna, if I wouldn't have found out this week at the meeting, and it was in the bills, and somebody would ask me, I would say, what are you talking about? We didn't buy no PA system. What's that? So, who's running the committees? Who's in charge of the committees? I'm just curious.
And that's my point exactly. If you've got something in the budget and somebody buys it, yet you still wanna talk about it again, we'll bring everything to the council again.
This item was not even a budget item. Being that we've made changes to the family, the summer family days this year, and we're not doing the fireworks, we have some extra money, and we were looking to enhance something, you know, we, but it would be nice if the chairman would actually know that we purchased it. I mean, the committees, all of a sudden, gonna make, they make the deal and done deal, right? That's what happened. This is what happened in this one. And if one of the aldermen would ask me, I wouldn't have had no answer for anybody because I didn't even know. I, and I told the committee, I go, listen, if we're gonna do this, all I need is to know, I would have a letter read at the council, and I'm sure everybody would say, no problem, you got it, you have the money in the budget, it's done. This way, I don't even have to get any questions. Here, it was just bought, I had no clue it was even bought, and I know the vice chairman didn't know either.
Christine Winger.
Back to an earlier part of the conversation, I really feel that, like Alderman Caddala, myself, and Alderman Coles, we're somewhat talking the same language, that, but, but my thing is, you know, at budget time, each committee needs to come forward and spend a month or two really thinking about what they wanna accomplish in the next fiscal year. And that's where we would go, okay, we approve of these projects, we don't approve of those. They have their dollar amounts of what they wanna meet, and ideally, they are under $10,000. And if they're not, then they would have to come to council, like Mr. Mayor Johnson said. But, you know, let's force a little planning and proposal-making on the committees to come forward and say, here's what we wanna accomplish. Council's gonna say yes or no, and then we're gonna see some things really moving. And, and you know, if committee goes and gets garbage, let's say we approve $9,000 worth of garbage cans, and, you know, at least we know at budget time that we told committee to go get those garbage cans. And if they're the wrong color, I can't help that because Mayor Johnson appointed those people. They'll just yell at the mayor if they're the wrong color. But we gotta put some trust in, into people. But within limits, we gotta set limits, we gotta approve it. I don't want things getting bought that we don't agree with, and that's what we do at budget time. Thank you.
Alderman Caddala.
Okay, where I agree with Alderman Winger is any problems that come from these subcommittees are actually the mayor's fault. So, that part, that part I'm good with. That was my impersonation of Marshall Suback, everybody. Okay. Now, where I disagree, where I disagree with Alderman Winger, respectfully so, is that to take a volunteer committee and say, all right, you guys are gonna basically spend two months thinking about everything you wanna do for the next 12, as, as ideas are fluid and plastic and they, they come up and they evolve over time, I can't support that. But what I would like to make a recommendation is that perhaps anytime one of these committees does come up with an idea where any dollar amount is being spent, even if it's just a couple hundred dollars, perhaps the manager can write a memo, information only, that could be sent, you know, at the time of our committees, and basically explain what it is that the committee was, was, is looking to do, what it's gonna cost, any, any details we can add to it. And if any member of committee, this committee, I mean, has an issue, problem, concern, question with that, it can be brought up under mayor's report. But hopefully, that won't happen that often, and everybody here is aware of what's going on, without having to discuss down to the minute detail. Unfortunately, the direction that could go is that every issue can be discussed down to the minute detail. But I don't know how else to solve that, so that this committee and ultimately this council has final knowledge and final say on how that money is spent.
Or it could go the opposite way, where I write that memo, and it gets in the packet for information only, and it slips somebody's mind, not saying that they're not gonna read their packets, and then two months from now, when this purple garbage can is in town, and I said I was okay, and then I'm in trouble then. Not good for me.
Can you do a mayor's report to read anything each council member verbally that's a violation? I'm sorry, that was a manager's report.
For what monetary values? Any value?
Anything that's not budgeted for.
So, you're saying any item, let's say, well, I'll bring any item, no matter how much it costs, and then, I'm confused.
Wait, stop right now. Let's, let's, let's get this wrapped up here. We're spending too much time on this project. One more time through, for questions, and then I'm gonna call the motion, and I'm gonna give my comments at the end. But let's get this wrapped up here, because this is like spending, I were talking about garbage cans again, I'm not going to do that anymore. Mr. Newsill.
Basically, what I said at our meeting, special events this week, I go, all we need is a simple letter to be read at the, an update. You know, we've hired these bands, you know, we wanna buy, we haven't spent all our money, we're gonna buy the PA system. All we need is read the letter, let everybody know what's going on, so there is no animosity later on. That's, that's all I'm asking for.
Okay.
Again, I'm gonna bring a letter, and it's gonna say, we're gonna spend $5,000 on plants in this area, it's in the $50,000 budget, thank you, and then what's gonna happen? There's gonna be somebody that's gonna take issue with it.
First thing they're gonna say is, what kind of plants?
Let's go right down. Mr. Luton. Any comments?
Yeah, I think it's appropriate. If you have some committee like Streetscape, which is supposed to take a year's worth of time to have a, you know, there's, there's January events, there's Easter bunnies, there's Memorial Day, there's Independence Day, and we get finally with Thanksgiving and Christmas and New Years. I, I think if they don't bring their budget to the council, to the council makes the decision, they may have spent all their money by the time the Easter bunny hops away, and there's no money left for Christmas lights. I think that Nuncio's right, and I don't see any other solution.
Mr. Sharkey. Any final comments?
I guess the idea of the manager giving us a quick update on what the committees want to do over a reasonable amount of money, whether it's $500, just as a courtesy to us, so that we can answer to our constituents, might be a good idea. Thank you.
Mayor Johnson.
I'm not sure if I can bring clarity to this or not, but there are standing committees authorized by ordinance. These five committees of the city council are standing committees that are authorized by ordinance. There are other committees authorized by our city code, such as the plant commission, such as the stormwater committee, such as the building code board of review. Those are city code, have legal standing. There are other committees that are creations of the mayor, which I have the authority to do, but are not official committees of the city of Wooddale. There are special blue ribbons committees, such as Streetscape, such as special events, and such as Clean Air Counts. They have no legal standing in our city code whatsoever. They have no authority, as I understand the code, you can clarify with the city attorney, to spend money in and of themselves. However, that authority does exist in the city manager if it is in the budget and is under $10,000. In the scenario, if they authorize garbage cans, he approves the purchase order, and they're purple and they're under $5,000, that's done. That decision was made. That power is within the authority of the city manager and in the ordinance, the budget ordinance itself, which created the fund. Now, I do think those, those three committees, Streetscape, Special Events, and Clean Air, should report to the city council, however they wanna do it, on a quarterly basis, six months or a year, under mayor's report, as to what their plans are and what their projects are. And then that should be ratified, or the city council should be at least aware of what they're doing, have the ability to raise objections to it. And that seems to have been missing from the process, that these committees don't come to the council and report. The only time we hear is at budget, and they put in a request for X amount of dollars, but there's no follow-through. I think if we have that information, that communication, that's gonna resolve a lot of the problems. But for, again, for immediate needs, for small expenditures, that is within the authority of the city manager, if it's in the budget.
Mr. Caddala.
I'm done.
Christine Winger.
I think Mayor Johnson summed it up pretty well. So, when we're done with our input, I'd be interested if Mr. Murmas has additional questions on that. Maybe it's just a socialization of the items being picked, like the color of the garbage can, you know, like maybe committee could start, you know, somehow, there's always that issue. that issue, right? That some people aren't gonna like it, no matter what, you know, and maybe we just kinda live with that, as long as we're aware of what they're spending the money on, and they're not off going, doing something that we didn't even want them to do, you know, like, that's a big dollar amount. That, I, I think that's where we come into our biggest thing. So if they come forward four times a year, and tell us what's going on their projects, we could tell them, wait, don't, stop right there, we don't want that. Or, we like the color green, like our city colors, green with the orange symbol, no, gold, you know, with the leaf and the, so, you know, maybe that would be helpful.
One minute, Jeff. Mr. Coles?
I'm done.
Okay, Jeff?
Okay, so I'm just trying to get some clarity here on what you want me to do. Perhaps on a monthly or bi-monthly basis even, because we do have regular meetings with Streetscape and Clean Air Counts and Special Events and stuff like that, so maybe at a bi-monthly council meeting, I give a report under manager's report, or do you, or does the mayor give a report under mayor's report?
I think the chairman of the committee under mayor's report should advise what the status is of the projects they're working on.
So the chairman of that committee would give an update on what projects they're working on, and then the council would say yea or nay on going further on those projects? Or else, what is the point?
I'd just say no.
Could I speak now? Here's what I, my recommendation, my motion on the floor is going to be that the city manager has authority to spend what he needs, that he's authorized to spend, but the committee does not have the right to spend the money. The city manager's got the right, like Mr. Johnson said, to spend that kind of money. I agree. But then, I think it would be nice that they do come back and give a report, maybe every two months. Jeff?
I'm just gonna bring it to the council every time, so...
Well, that's your choice, but I mean, like the mayor said, that he's got authority. So the motion, I guess we don't need a motion, this was information only. So if there's no more discussions on this, it's over. Okay. All right. Items of future meeting, water rate billing analysis, real estate transfer fees, pay plan for non-union employees, CY press funding report. Any other items? Okay, don't see more, any more items, it's coming. I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks.